This is a public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission. A few announcements before we start.
Which end?
I am on.
Yeah, he's just spoken to you across him.
Several items have been postponed. Item number one, item number six, item number seven, item number 11. Item number five was withdrawn. And while it's in our agenda, item number eight was closed at the last meeting. And so it will, I believe, be decided on the evening of August 1st. A long night in store for us. Dennis Jeski is seated for Andy Fox. And with that, the first item on the agenda is item number two, Planning and Zoning Staff, Application for Text Amendments.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Katie DeLuca, the Town Planner. We do have copies of the amendments over there if you'd like to read along. And I have asked the court reporter to place the amendments into the transcripts so we don't have to read them from scratch and we can save a little bit of time. You've indicated that that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Sorry, Katie, did you want a sign-in sheet?
And I'd also note that at the table where you are, there's also a sign-in sheet. So if you'd like to speak, if you could sign in there. If you choose to speak after you didn't sign in, that's fine, too. We'll call on you at that point also. So just give a little background on this regulation that we're proposing. It's a change to Sections 6-5 and Section 6-134. And staff is very pleased to be putting forth this regulation this evening because it's in direct response to the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. The commission spent 21 months on this plan, as you all know. And we're gathering input from the community to determine and document our guiding principles as to how we conserve and how we develop. And the message was loud and clear: to develop in a way that preserves the community character, preserves the natural environment, and protects natural resources. Chapter one reads, quote, "The natural topography of Greenwich contributes to community character and is an important natural resource," end quote. The proposal before the commission this evening addresses the extensive manipulation of existing topography through the use of grade plane walls while respecting the fact that Greenwich is topographically diverse and retaining walls will inevitably be a part of our landscape. There are no changes to the number of stories. There are no changes to building height. Simply less retaining walls and less ability to build up properties that create homes that loom over one's neighbor. It is also in direct response to comments made in the Working Group of Design Professionals to allow slope between walls and also to allow vegetated slope in lieu of walls. Just as we introduced the grade plane back in 2002 as a way to get away from counting basement-floor area based on whether it is a finished space or not, we are now also proposing to count the attic area based on its contribution to bulk and not on how it is used on the inside. The regulations, the building zone regulations, are one of the reasons that Greenwich is such a desirable community to live and frankly, to develop. It is important to strike the right balance now. One of the suggested solutions to excessive grade manipulations found in both the Plan of Conservation and Development and in some of the comments that we've received already on this proposal this evening are to require a special permit in situations where more than 50 percent of the property is regraded or when there is more than a foot of fill brought onto the property. Implementing that goal and that proposal would dramatically change how land is altered or not and how buildings are constructed and how permits are issued. The relevance, however, is that it speaks volumes as to the sentiments of the community on the issue of grade manipulation, and that's why I'm bringing it up. But the primary reasons why people want to manipulate grade as much as they do are to bury the basement-floor area so that it is excluded from the gross-floor area, to lift grade to increase a view, or leveling out a site so as to create a level yard. Goal 1.33 of the Plan of Conservation and Development states, quote, "Land use agencies should review the extensive manipulation of existing topography by the use of grade plane walls," end quote. To implement this goal, this proposal defines the height and distance between walls by zone as to the standard five feet up and five feet between walls across all zones. It also allows slope from the first wall to a point six feet out from the house so as to allow for a landscaped slope in lieu of the retaining walls. Further, it allows for 2 percent slope from the last wall to the house within that six feet area so water can be directed away from the house. This is depicted in the new diagram 1A. The concept of slope in lieu of walls was suggested by a member of the Working Group of Professionals that we've been working with to get input on this proposal. It was a good suggestion, and as you can see, it's been added into the proposal. But switching gears away from grade for a moment, another purpose of this amendment is to measure the attic floor area based on how it contributes to bulk from the exterior of the structure as opposed to how it is used in the interior. Currently, if an attic space is created through trust construction, it is excluded from gross-floor area. This has led to a scenario where a home with identical attic space on the outside would be counted differently despite it having the same visual impact. The proposed change is to remove "use," so to speak, from how attic space is regulated by excluding the attic area from the allowable gross-floor area in the instance where it complies with the definition of half-story, which is basically any space under the gable, hip, or gambrel roof, the gross-floor area of which, including dormers, does not exceed 40 percent of the floor immediately below in the R6 through RA1 zones and 50 percent of the floor area immediately below in the RA2 and RA4 zones and in the commercial zones when measured at a plane six feet above the floor directly below the roof. So if the area is 41 percent in those lower zones, then it no longer meets the definition of half-story and the entire 41 percent would count towards the floor area. This rule applies irrespective of construction type, meaning one may still choose trust construction, but inclusion or exclusion of gross-floor area will no longer be a factor in that decision. This regulation change is supported by the town fire department and the zoning enforcement officer, and we have their comments in the file. So in summary, this proposal directly addresses the goal of the Plan of Conservation and Development to address the extensive manipulation of existing topography by the use of grade plane walls while respecting the fact that Greenwich is topographically diverse and walls will inevitably be a part of our landscape. There are no changes to the number of stories, no changes to the building height, simply less walls and less ability to build up properties with high walls and looming homes over one's neighbor. It is also in direct response to comments made in the Working Group of Design Professionals to allow slope between walls or in exchange for the walls. And just as we introduced the grade plane back in 2002 as a way to get away from counting basement-floor area based on whether it was a finished space or not, this proposal is to count the attic based on its contribution to bulk and not on how it is used on the I would just note again that we do have the copies of the regulation over there. And for those at home, we do have a direct link on the town website at GreenwichCT.org where you can take a look there. Also, we have planned two public hearings for this topic. The first one is obviously this evening, and the second one will be on August 1st. So if there's something that you forgot to say or your neighbor's away or what have you, there's a second opportunity to come and speak publicly. And also, you can always submit comments via mail or via email to myself at kdeluca@greenwichct.org if you'd like to get your comments in that way. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the commission? Any pub-- okay. Could we get the list of people who want to speak? Could you get it, Nick? Okay. I didn't see you, Victoria.
We have two people.
Two people. All right. Well, all right, well, why don't we just, since a limited number of at least signed up to speak, we could maybe say five minutes? So you're first, Paul.
You're going to take the question?
Yeah.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Paul Poliezay. I am chairman of the Architectural Review Committee, although I'm not speaking on their behalf this evening. We did not discuss it, but I have a feeling if we had that they would understand some of the statements I'm about to make. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I want to thank Katie for including a number of us over a period of years in trying to figure out a solution to the grade plane dilemma and the impact that it's had on the character of the town. On a positive note, we appreciate the efforts of excluding the attic area and the reduction of the width of the grade plane from 10 feet to six feet plus the wall thickness. And also appreciate the idea of including the grading between the walls because we think it would soften the height and impact of the walls themselves. As far as the limitations on the grade plane walls that vary by zone, I do not feel that this is a simplification or significant relief from the current regulations due to the complexity and the fact that these changes affect every residential property to varying degrees. It's important that the residents understand how it impacts them. I think a staff workshop where people could actually bring in examples of how their property slopes and how their homes sit on the property may be in order because of the varying impact on these different properties. I also feel that because of the limited attendance that we have here tonight, considering that theoretically 60,000 people are affected by this, that people don't understand the impact or the complex nature of these proposed changes. I wanted to go back briefly for a minute to talk about how this all came about. And the original problem came about in 1998 when the POCD, the key word in that POCD was the perceived bulk of houses, the McMansions, which led to the FAR and the grade plane measurement system. The grade plane requirements created problems of excessive grade manipulation because people needed to stay within the required building height and at the same time exclude less desirable basement space from the total allowable FAR. The consequences of the grade plane manipulation were that in an effort to meet the height standard and exclude the basement, FAR led to, basement FAR led to multiple retaining walls and the creation of the 10-foot-wide grade plane plateau or podium to build on. This has not only created severe grade differentials with neighboring properties but also caused a very unnatural-looking level platform. I think that when we make changes like this, there are several factors to consider, and some of them have to do with people's trends as to what they prefer in housing. And you will not find anyone building houses with less than nine-foot ceilings today. So that means at least 10 feet floor-to-floor. When you add the grade plane factor of zero to three feet, you start getting into a very limited height that you have to work with. When you factor in a sloping lot, that makes it even more difficult. Flat-roofed contemporary homes are not the preferred architectural style, although a lot of this regulation may increase the number of flat-roofed homes because of the height limitations. People really want the majority of their usable living space on the first and second floor, and although it's nice to have the use of the attic, especially since it's there already, they really don't want to have the majority of their living space in the attic or the basement. The proposed regulation limits retaining walls at the property line, which impedes the ability to exclude basement areas. It increases the distance between walls, which affects setbacks. As an example, if an R6 or R7 property required two walls of 2'6" in height to raise the grade plane to exclude the basement FAR, previously you could have gotten up 10 feet in 10 feet. The minimum distance would be about 15 feet. That's because the distance between the walls is six feet, so that's double that, is 12 feet. And the wall thickness generally is around 18 inches, so that adds another three feet. Many of the R6 and 7 lots are below minimum lot size or width. Much of the R6 zone was originally R5 with 50-by-100-foot lots in Byram, Coscobb, and other areas of town, including central Greenwich. Subtracting 15 feet from each side yard for the grade plane walls to exclude half of the basement area would allow a 20-foot house width, which is really unacceptable by today's standards. On sloping lots, the choice may be counting the entire basement and building a one-and-a-half-story house above it or burying part of the first floor. So if you had a high street, for instance, and your lot sloped down, you may have to excavate your front yard and sink the house further into the ground, which causes drainage as well as other issues of aesthetics. And you'd end up with a, otherwise you'd end up with a one-and-a-half-story cape, basically. The proposed limits, the proposal limits grading to a 2 percent pitch in the grade plane. So the grade plane itself, even though it's been reduced in width, will still appear to be a plateau because 2 percent grade is roughly three inches and six feet. It's not going to really visually affect the fact that it looks like you put your house on a platform. We would suggest that the grading from the grade plane wall to the house also be allowed to have more pitch to it. We had, in our original proposal, which was denied in March, we had asked to eliminate the zero to three feet to count half the basement and go straight to zero to five feet. Along with that, we suggested that there be a two-foot increase in height because two feet at the foundation is far more acceptable visually than two feet higher retaining wall at the property line.
Excuse me, Paul. We hit the five-minute line. You got red light. Do you have much more or?
A little bit more. I wanted to suggest some solutions. So, and another thing, it doesn't allow for any flexibility for older homes. There are many, particularly in downtown Greenwich, where if someone wanted to take an older home and add on to it or exclude their basement, these new regulations limiting the height of the retaining walls, because they're built on minimum setbacks, wouldn't allow people to even meet the grade plane requirements. So the natural inclination would be to remove the house altogether. And finally, the current proposal also changes the measurements of walls in all zones, residential and commercial, to increase the allowable distance between walls by incorporating the wall thickness. This will amount to an increase in setbacks, a reduction in buildable area, and encourage thinner reinforced concrete walls or even metal sheet pile walls to minimize that setback requirement. The best solution is to eliminate grade plane and FAR completely and use stories, building height, setbacks, and green area to determine house measurement and bulk. Going back to the 50 percent perimeter rule on basements, which may still require filling in some cases, the plateau raised high above the neighborhood property is far more objectionable than more exposed foundations softened by planting. Increase building height in smaller zones by two feet for flexibility on sloping lots and measure building height from the first floor, not the grade, which is variable up until the day that the landscaping is done. If the measurements were done from the first floor, then the zoning enforcement officer would have a much easier time determining whether or not the height limit had been reached. And then I would also suggest that if the commission does implement any of these reductions that they support variances for topographically challenged lots, especially ones that fit historic home categories. And one last thing is I think this is going to create a massive amount of nonconformity because of all the homes that were built in the last 15 years that now have walls that are in excess of the new regulation.
Thank you.
And Teresa Hatton couldn't be here tonight. She's away on business in Atlanta and has authorized me to speak on her behalf as well.
Thank you. We only have one other person signed up to speak.
Linda.
Linda? He didn't sign up.
I was too lazy to walk all the way across the room. But I want to correct something that Paul said. You know, 2 percent and six feet is an inch and a half, so we're not going to get much out of that. So there's not a lot to be gained in that sloping distance. I think that the end result of this regulation, if it were to be approved and implemented, would be that we would be sinking, as Paul suggested, into the ground more often than not. We would have walls along the side. In this case, they wouldn't be built up, they'd be dropping down and driving down into the site to accommodate this necessary burying of the basement because the basement's necessary to hold up the first and second floors of the house. And if you drop the house down into the site, you're going to see water coming down to the front of the building, and you're going to see more site disruption through excavation so that we could drop the house down into the site. Couple suggestions if you go forward with something like this. I don't understand why we go with something like 26 percent. Why do we have 26 percent?
It's just taking the mathematical four feet up, 15 feet across, four feet up, 15 feet across, and that's how the percentage was arrived at.
For the sake of it, it could be one on four and be 25 percent, or one on five and be 20 percent instead of 21. Just computation that's unnecessary, that's all. But anyway, that's just a suggestion. The fact of the matter is, and you take an R12 zone, which we seem to have the most experience with and the most problems with, you'll never get two walls because, as Paul pointed out again when we did a couple of analyses, you're going to end up with reductions in homes that are now long and narrow, long to the maximum and narrow, which is not attractive and it's not functional. We may end up with more carports so that we don't count FAR because we don't want to lose that space that we've now been able to hide, if you will, in the basement. I keep saying, and I've said it many other times, 150 years ago when my great-grandfather came across, they lived in the basement, they had to live in the basement. We don't want to live in the basement anymore, and I think that's what you're trying to do, is force houses down. We're not going to do that. So we need to count for the sloping of the topography. We are going to live on the first and second floor. We're going to have to respond to these regulations by digging down, and I think that's going to be the prediction, the unintended consequence of what you're proposing. What we had suggested before would have eliminated walls. This will not eliminate walls. We'll still have walls. You think they're going to be lower in height.
They will be.
They will be if this is implemented, but we're going to have walls on the side to drop the building down. You haven't accounted for that yet. Maybe I shouldn't have mentioned it. That's going to be the result. And I've done that, a couple of quick analysis on a few things that we've done. We did a couple of hours, just if you had a five-foot drop across a building lot, you still need two walls, and you'll not be able to get down to the less than three feet that you're still trying to maintain. And therefore, the only way to do that is to drop the house down into the ground.
Well, that's what perhaps you're trying to retain, and there's always the second gap in there, three to five, where you're given bonuses, if you will, for being in that gap, too. It's not either-or.
You're correct, but on an individual, single-family home, we've seldom worked within between the three and five. On a multi-family, you've seen that more often, truthfully. And we've done hundreds of them now. So I think we've got a pretty good track record on how this is going to work, and I think that you're going to see the excavation down inviting problems with water, you know, impacting groundwater, impacting ledge as you dig down, and then the practical result of having a driveway down into the house. I don't think we want to see things like on the corner of Millbank Avenue and Lincoln Avenue where we've got a 10 percent driveway going down into a home. That's what you're going to see. You should go back and look at that house on your way home. That's something that you don't want.
You're thinking we're going to get out of here in daylight?
I think you could.
I've been a longtime resident in town, and I was also a member of Katie's work group. And I just wanted to make sure that, A, you have received my letter in which I tried to address some of the more technical details, which both Paul and Tony outlined, so I don't want to really repeat it here. I do share their deep concerns that this is really all going into more technical morass and really going the wrong direction. It is not solving walls, it's not solving any topography. It is more of the same mess, basically, in my view. It's fixing a road that's full of potholes, and at the end of the day, you wind up with a road full of potholes. You've never really addressed and created a nice roadway that we actually all want to travel down. I think that's the fundamental problem. We really should step back and think about, is there maybe a better way? Were we better off pre-2002 without the grade plane? Maybe there's a far simpler and better concept that we haven't simply explored because we've been finessing these grade plane details to death. Secondly, I do think there's a little bit of urgency here to disconnect the attics and basement conversation from the grade plane. Clearly, there's a lot more to think about and go through regarding the grade plane. From the fire department, we hear over and over again, the trust designs that we currently have for attics are dangerous, we should get rid of them as soon as possible. So therefore, I would urge the commission to really break it into two items and look at attics and basement. There seems to be broad consensus, this is a good thing to go forward with, as you have proposed on the regulations. Do it because one fire may just be the payoff at the end of the day. Can't come soon enough. So having said that about a grade plane, I was wondering all weekend long, was there or are there, within our communities, examples of better solutions? What are the homes that we all are proud of when we can speak of Greenwich and Greenwich property, where we say, this is a great example of our best community, our most beautiful communities? So as an old geezer, as I am, I go back to my books, and I went straight back to the Great Estates books, book. And as you can see, all these tags are actually addressing specific statements having to do with the items that we're talking about here, meaning walls, meaning topography. So this is a book that, in the jacket, even celebrates the great architecture and the great landscape that we have in town in our very top communities. And who is one of the key sponsors? Diane Fox. She was one of the key co-creator of this entire project, this entire book. So I just want to share with you a couple of examples, and it's full of it, of Belle Haven, for example. Page number 12, it says right there, "For Quarry Farm." "And 2,000 yards of fill were brought in to raise the surrounding land." People were really celebrating in this very book what was done for this estate to create this estate. Another example in Indian Harbor. About three full acres here were created for marshland so cleverly planted, they seem to have been there forever. Page eight. "The Rockefeller Estate. Most of the roadside walls were double, the field walls were simple in width. So today, many of these walls remain in excellent condition." So here we are thinking about the likely outcome of our current proposed regulations being thinner walls, and if there's been one silver lining in all of it is that so far, people have gone through the extra expense of actually putting them as stone walls instead of ugly concrete and maybe even metal walls. And then finally, there's one more. "Seton Hardest, one triad at Wingole, was the successful completion of a dam which created a tranquil lake a third of a mile long and 20 feet deep." So to say that we have no So to say that we have no examples of our prime real estate that has not been in some way manipulated by people, that we now are saying, boy, these are great estates, is just a falsehood. So now to be having a discussion about 2% grade changes and inches in height is a little funny. Thank you. Sabine Schoenberg. S.A., oh, last name, S.C.H.O.E.N.B.E.R.G.
Good evening. I'm Christine Edwards, and I am also a long-term resident here. The one thing that I brought up once before at a meeting and I'm bringing up again, didn't bring my drawing pad, but here we are. The issue of grade plane is usually something that is part of the commercial code. And the reason for it is, when you have a commercial building, you have to have an area that you can bring a fire truck on, if you need to bring the fire trucks on with ladders and with pumping machines and everything else to combat fire and flame. And therefore, you need to have a flat plateau around a building to do it. This has not been a residential structure. This is something that came out of commercial building. And for some reason, we've wanted to have this plateau around a house, which has created many, many problems, the wedding cakes, et cetera, and the multiple different levels of walls, which we don't find very attractive. I was just looking today on Millbank and, and Havemeyer, where you have homes that are sloping beautiful green up, and then at the, at the south corner of Millbank and Havemeyer, it's wall after wall after wall, wedding cake style going up, which is the most attractive. So there's that that we should really look at. And when we look, and I'm so glad that Sabine brought up the issue of the great estates, because it looks like we wouldn't be able to build those today. And when we look at architecture, just one aspect of the roof, I remember years ago when this was discussion, people mentioning, as Paul just did, the idea of the flat roof contemporary because of the whole issue for attic's, where when you look at a New England roof that's 12 over 12, it gives you a very nice look. It is more of the older Victorians, et cetera, have those roofs. And if you build in, in anything, whether it's a playroom or even just storage there, who cares from the floor, from looking at it, rather, from the outside? That's how the snow comes down. You don't want to start building mansard roofs and small, little inclined roofs. That's not what the New England architecture is. So if we're really going to be true to what the building is and what the gorgeousness of the architecture is, we have to take a step back and look at what really do people like? What do they choose? And if it's going to be bound by such extreme vision of small, little attic's or no attic at all, it doesn't provide us with the vista of the New England architecture, which I really would like to emphasize, that we should be looking to do, not to constrict what we have. Thank you.
Did we ever?
Hello, I'm John Ryan of 61 Weaver Street. Actually, just have a question.
One second. Did we ever have Linda?
No. She seated her.
Okay.
Linda Hodge.
Okay. Fine.
I really, thank you. I really just have a question for the commission. So regarding the attic space change, the area, say, say for instance, an area is opened up, but the attic continues to have trussing, continues to have portal access to dormers, will those areas that continue to be trussed, continue to have portal access for dormers, will they continue to be excluded from the floor ratio calculation?
It depends. Again, it depends on the calculation. If it applies with the definition of half-story, they will not be included. If it exceeds the, that definition, the area will be included, whether it's a truss or regular framing.
Right, right. But if, if there's, if there's an area that is in excess of seven feet that happens to be trussed, you're, that would, and currently, it's not being included in calculation.
It would be included.
It would be included.
If you go over the 40% in the RA1 down zones, 50% in the RA2 and 4.
Okay, so the except, the exemption that's currently in place, if there is trussing or is portal access to dormered areas, is being taken away. Is that correct?
Yes, but it's really more of a function of its percentage of the floor below than it is a function of the way it's counted now. So that's what Mr. Maitland's saying, that, that if, if you exceed that 40%, regardless of whether it's trussed or not under the existing condition, then it will count. If, if it does not exceed that 40% in the RA1 and lower, then, then, what did I say? If it does not, then, then it will not count. So regardless of how it's, so as an example, if you've got an existing home that is at 39%, that was built, you know, 15 years ago and is accessed via a pull-down stair, that can now be converted to a fixed stair that you could get up into the attic. But the, the inverse is true, that if you've got a pull-down stair and you're at 45% of the floor below, then it will count, regardless of the fact that you can't get up there other than through the pull-down stair.
Okay.
So you could end up with a non-conforming FAR where you might not have one now.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification, and I am actually in favor of this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No.
Jan Talheim, Old Greenwich.
Could you spell your name?
J.
Last name?
Talheim. T.H.A.L.H.E.I.M. And I've always had a, a problem with the grade plane, you know, the, and it, to me, it should really go back to the original grade plane, because it isn't, is an imposition on the neighbors. And then the other, the other part that is kind of interesting is that we have the flood zones where we're kind of forcing everybody to build up, nothing in an area that can get flooded. But meanwhile, we build basements that flood all the time. Flooding and saltwater is predictable, or at least you can avoid it. With flooded basements, power goes out, the pumps goes off, and they flood. So sometimes I really don't understand where that connection, disconnection is. You're forcing people, or the feds are forcing the people to build so high up and really ruining some of these neighborhoods.
You, you said it exactly.
Right, but, but.
The flood plane, the flood elevations have increased. That's true.
Right, but, but then, so, but to that point, the town could go to some of the other towns that they have a readjustment, that if you made improvements, you can still add on, and you don't have to lift the whole structure. So there are things that the town and the planning board could do to address some of that kind of forced elevation rise in these houses and these neighborhoods. And these neighborhoods go up and down, and it's like King of the Hill. It's, you, the grades, it's just sad to see. And it's not that livable. And for older people, too. It isn't conducive for older people.
Well, a lot of it is, as you know, is being forced by the, by the floods and the flood elevations in those areas. You can't build livable space.
I see that, but it, it's interesting also, it's $250,000 of insurance of houses of multiple values of that. So it's really not, it's a little bit, there should be a little bit more free choice from the standpoint of what elevation. But kind of, my point is really much more in this thing. We're, we're building these houses with these basements, trying to push these houses up because of the basement. We have water tables that are high, you're pumping out the water tables, you're, you're going to flood down there. And, but it doesn't seem like it matters if those flood, but the houses flood. So that's where I think there's a little bit of a contradiction in, I know that's not being addressed here, but it is with the, the grade planes and trying to raise them up and everything else. And I think, you know, that.
I, I don't know. I, I always thought that when we changed the grade plane for the flood zone areas, that it was quite successful.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a couple of different things that you're raising now, because you're talking about basements and flood zones which are not permitted, which is why we have the flood zone grade plane, so that you can regain some of that lost floor area, so to speak. And you can, and you can lift the house higher and not have a big, not run into issues with stories, and you can still have some of that floor area. So that's one issue. And then you're talking about another issue outside of the coastal area or outside of the flood areas, where you can have a basement, but you may be going into groundwater issue, into groundwater. Is that what you, right. So those are two separate issues.
Right, yeah. Yeah, they're two issues.
Right.
But from the standpoint, if we're so concerned about houses getting flooded.
I think we're concerned about.
Why are concerns so different? Because, in my opinion, saltwater is much more predictable, and you can do a lot more mitigation from the standpoint of getting hurt by saltwater than you can by rainwater and power outages where pumps fail. And, you know, these, these, these flood plains or, or groundwater levels, especially when it's wet, they rise and rise. And so, you know, you're going to have flooding, and.
I think, I think these regulations are really speaking more to people, building more in keeping with the environment instead of trying to manipulate it. So obviously, there's going to be manipulation when you build on a property. You're going to have to dig for the basement and all, all of the things that you do when you build, when you build a home, tree removal, et cetera. But it's to what level that happens that we're dealing with here. So we're on very fine line. There has to be a line somewhere in the sand when we, when we have a set of regulations. Those set of regulations have to be in compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development. That plan is the community's voice as to how we've decided as a community, we want our landscape to look. So our regulations are just reflecting that desire. So that's really what this regulation is, is about. It's, obviously, there's going to be some instances where it works extremely well and some instances where it may not work so well. As someone mentioned already, that's where you have the relief valve with the, with the zoning board of appeals and an option to get a variance. But it's really about that balance is what we're trying to do here.
But you can't get variances on the, on the flood plane elevations, right?
Well, we set up a set of regulations so that the number of variances were significantly reduced. There were so many variances being requested with people trying to lift their homes up so as to get out of the flood, flood plains, and so that they could have that foot of free, freeboard, so to speak. And in doing so, by trying to lift up those homes, they were running into conflict with the story regulations. And it was happening with such frequency that we decided to change the regulation to eliminate that problem, and that's the flood zone grade plane.
But, but it's, the town is still forcing these houses up to the FEMA elevations, correct?
Right.
Correct.
And that's for coastal resiliency issues and, and safety issues, flood insurance.
I think, yeah, the flood insurance also is.
So that's, as you mentioned, the National Flood Insurance Program is the driver behind all of that.
Right. But I guess the, so on that, I, I know this isn't in front of you, but I do hope in the future, you know, there's some kind of reset. I think Stanford has a reset after a number of years for previous improvements that have been made to the structure that then can continue to stay at that elevation, or can, the new part might be higher, but you can do more renovations.
Thank you. Okay. Signing sheet didn't work too well tonight.
Good evening. My name is Francia Alvarez, and I'm on the Board of Directors and the Advocacy Chair for the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, and we represent over 800 donors. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for this opportunity to comment. We appreciate the commission's continued effort to find a balance between the town's development and the protection of our natural resources. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy's mission is to preserve and enhance the tree and forest resources of Greenwich to benefit our community, our health, and our quality of life. We pay careful attention to the goals of the Plan of Conservation and Development that represents a compilation of all planning efforts and strategies for the future of Greenwich. As stated in the Greenwich Plan, the 2009 POCD is first about conservation and second about development. Special, and it goes on to state, "Special characteristics of Greenwich are inherent natural aesthetics of the landscape. Our streetscape seem unprotected and unfamiliar as we witness severe site regrading, clearcutting of our trees, shrubs, and vegetation. Age-old homes are raised in less than a day and replaced with looming houses and structures built to near maximum floor area ratios. Often, this crowding creates a sense of unease in neighbors in ways never anticipated by our existing building zone regulations. Our general sense, without specifics, is that economic value of Greenwich land and properties is guiding these changes and creating the challenges around us. Changes in Greenwich must be motivated by and addressed to our quality of life choices and not motivated by chance or economic motivation." And that's the end of the quote from the POCD 2009. "Considerable effort is being made to protect our environmental assets in Bruce Park during this ever-source application process. However, we need to protect these assets on our residential lots as well. We need to practice preservation of notable and mature trees, which are often historic features of the site, and provide scenic views both from and to the site." The last major change to FAR was in 2002, when FAR was reduced by 10%. This was also when grade plane and associated adjustments to stories heights and attic's were introduced into the regulations. By 2009, seven years later, it became apparent that there were unintended consequences from these changes. As clearcutting, the use of fill, and retaining walls grew, the so-called wedding cake effect took hold in our neighborhoods. These are the action items listed in the POCD that we believe are relevant. Adopt regulations to require special permit for applications involving regrading of more than 50%. Consider regulations to prevent significant grade alterations. Provide standards for construction on slopes of over 25% and limit the height of retaining walls. Consider requiring all excavation activities provide a soil erosion and sedimentary, cementation control plan and grading and drainage plans. Provide increased inspections to certify compliance. Upgrade the excavation and fill ordinance for RTM approval, and land use agencies should review the extensive manipulation of existing topography by the use of grade plane walls. These POCD goals provide solutions to find the balance between maintaining the natural topography of Greenwich and development. The GTC also believes the following additions need to be addressed. Low-impact development and best management practices. Stormwater management on small lots is not meeting square below-impact development guidelines. Smaller lots in town are 20, or 12, or 7, or 6, are experiencing extensive site disturbances, soil compaction, clearcutting, and utility and sewer trenches being run through critical root zones. Because of this, many smaller lots and neighborhoods experience loss of privacy, water-filled basements, and stormwater pollution. We need changes that include the enforcement of LID and BMP on all lots, large and small, whether the permits passed through P&amp;Z or the Building Department. Just as the proposed grade plane amendment is being considered for buildings in any residential zone, we believe that LID and BMP should be considered for building sites in any residential zone." Next, manipulation of topography and fill. Natural topography contributes to community character. When the natural topography is altered with, with regrading, excavating, and filling, trees are either clearcut or smothered. Regrading of properties can also dramatically increase drainage and flooding problems on an area-wide or neighborhood basis. A classic example of this is Havemar Park, part of the cider mill watershed. Neighboring properties experience flooded basements. The impacts from erosion may be invisible to most residents, but if not adequately controlled, sediment washes onto adjoining properties and also into places like Benny Pond. Other than one foot of fill for landscaping requirements, there are some jurisdictions that prohibit grade plane changes at property lines and do not permit fill within building setbacks, including on smaller lots. Only by provi- proving a special hardship will some towns grant a permit to allow for fill greater than a foot. Therefore, fill and manipu- manipulation of topography need to be addressed. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy is very appreciative of all the hard work and perseverance that has gone into crafting the new grade plane and attic codes. As we stated earlier, the proposed changes to grade plane and attic is a very, a very significant step forward to reach the goals of the POCD, to protect our natural topography, environmental assets, and urban forest. We look forward to supporting planning and zoning on the proposed changes to grade plane and attic with the additions we have raised. We need to use building code regulations to preserve our natural topography, our important natural assets, our historic mature trees, and our urban forests that we all share here in Greenwich. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Brian Tunney, T-U-N-N-E-Y, resident here. I'd just like to state that thanks for listening and that we, as the woman eloquently said earlier, that the POCD wants us, wants to control and keep the landscape. With these new regulations, the landscape is only going to change more dramatically because of the fact that you have more walls, flatter roofs, and people are looking to pack more into a small space. pack more into a small space. The idea initially of this was to create a, I should say, let people use their attics if they want to. And so, you know, and especially in smaller homes where people are trying to live and they just want to be able to use it. It's there. The other point I wanted to make is with the P O C D and with the Tree Conservancy, you know, what we're proposing here is going to cause more disruption and less homes staying because anything on a sloped lot now is non-conforming. Another thing that I would say is how many houses now with these new regulations will be non-conforming? You're going to create a whole new issue of homes that are not, that were perfectly conforming, and these are even new constructions. Forget about homes that were built in the 20s and 30s and 40s that we'd like to keep. So, I urge us or you to consider the old formula of setbacks, height, and green space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, then I guess we'll see you all back on August 1st. If you want to submit things in writing, as Katie said early, that would be good. Certainly, they'll all be reviewed. And if you've got examples, submit those to Katie also. Item.
I was falling asleep in the chat.
I'm going to find it here. You know who you are.
Item three.
Item number three.
Just wait a second for room to clear.
Senior ranking member of.
No, that's because I was only texting. See, Andy knows. You need training.
I'll learn.
They've cleared pretty well.
Okay. I was letting the vacuum get out. For the record, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, representing I T L Investments. Really, the only outstanding issue was the sewer cutting through the property. Per the Sewer Department's request, we have flipped the house. It's the same building. The building has not changed. We just basically flipped it so that now it faces the office building, and we hold the five-foot on that side. We have the landscape plan that we've revised today, but we can submit that to staff afterwards to address the change in the way the building shape faces. And I think that was really the only issue was sewer. And Sewer sent an email today saying that they were okay with this.
Okay. Well.
Originally, you didn't want to because you wanted the face of the building to be facing.
We still don't want to. We don't really want to do this, but our hand is forced because Sewer is arbitrarily saying that we've got to be 15 feet off of the sewer main, which shouldn't be on the property in the first place, has no right to be there, but there it is. And we really, we're at the end of.
How wide is the easement?
Well, there is no easement. That's the problem. On this property, there is no easement for that sewer.
I'm sorry, what is the setback there?
Well, we're 15 feet from the property line to the building here.
15 feet.
Yeah.
Well, the setback is only 10.
Right.
Because you're using, I think you're using the five on the east side.
We are, but we also need to be able to get into the garages.
I understand that, but in our six zone, it would be 10 and five would be required.
But, yeah, this isn't desirable. This isn't the ideal, but it's what we've been backed into. It's the only way we can move forward.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Feminella, how far is the sewer, that private sewer line from the wall of the parking garage?
The wall of the garage? Well, the garage is here.
No, 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 the commercial garage next door.
Oh, it's at less than five feet. I mean, it's very close.
The wall, five feet, the pipe, and then.
Not even. I mean, give me a sec. Some places, it's four and five feet. It gets a little bigger. What happened was when they built the garage, they dug up and relocated the sewer line and property lines be damned, but they put the thing back in, and they got it as close to this wall as they could. I think they planted trees at the time to try to mask that wall, but, you know, this was back in 1973, and it just never got caught. But like we said, there's no easement on our property for that line, but it's there. We've got to deal with it. We are where we are.
Thank you.
Any comments from the commissioners? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, then we will close this.
Thank you very much.
Happy words. Item number four, Brandon and Blair Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tony DeAndrea, representing Brandon and Blair Hall. We were here on the 26th, I guess, and the only issue outstanding at that time was whether or not we could identify or had identified all the locations of sewer lines that may or may not have been coming in from other properties. We had already identified the one to the west, and there was another suggestion that there might be one from the academy to the north side. We went out with Highland Sewer and Drain and identified all of those. We also had Chris Mandrus from the Sewer Department on site, and we had conversations with both Richard Feminella and Chris Mandrus about the location. We had excavated test pits, and we had marked them, and they had been located and mapped. We also provided, under a cover later dated July 3rd, a summary of the location of the sewers laterals that exist and the fact that there were no recorded easements for either of those sewers that crossed the property from west to east and from north to south. What we've done is demonstrate how we can intercept those existing sewers, replace them because they're in bad condition, and then, for the first time, created easement around each of those laterals. As I said, those were summarized in a letter dated July 3rd. A copy was sent to Katie DeLuca. We also included a letter from Howard Commissar, the attorney representing the halls, in which he notes that there are no easements of record on file relative to any of those private laterals. So, what we're doing, and we've done before on other projects, is we are creating easements where previously none had existed, and we certainly accept that as a condition of the site plan approval. The other outstanding issue at the time was whether or not we had satisfied the zoning enforcement officers to whether or not the garage building on the south side of the main building was, in fact, a principal structure. Mr. Jordi Couture did submit a letter or a memo dated July 13th in which he says the subject site plan meets the requirements of the building zone regulations excluding section 15 and 17, which, of course, are site plan criteria. Mr. Feminella, at the very end of the day today, 4:23, excuse me, not 4:23.
4:20.
4:20, excuse me. I read the wrong email. The 4:20.
That's the date or the time, I mean.
Actually, I got it at 4:37 from Marissa, luckily, because I was heading out at a meeting, for a meeting, and just happened to catch it, in which he suggests that we need to seek the approval of the owners of those properties. And I totally disagree with that because, very simply, while it may ultimately be done, it's a civil matter, it is not his lateral, it's a private line, and there are no recorded easements as evidenced by the attorney's research and the title report for the property that was purchased by the halls. Therefore, obviously, we accept as a condition that we will secure the, we will provide notice because I think it's inappropriate for the commission to put the owner in a position of potential extortion. We've been through that before recently on a significant one that Katie recognizes. It's a very untenable situation for the owner to be obligated to accommodate a neighbor in an awkward position.
The problem is that in his memo, he says that the two comments he's making have to be addressed before we.
That's his opinion, and I think that the commission understands that that's his opinion.
But they met with John Wetmore this afternoon.
And his attorney suggests.
Were you in the meeting?
Were we invited to the meeting? Of course not.
Okay. Well, so, we're kind of stuck because they met with John Wetmore, and they came out of that meeting saying that they needed to address those two points. The, I think we've already done the sewer line profiles, but they addressed the one thing.
Right.
And so, we're kind of in a stuck point because we've got two.
Well, it was an either-or.
Right. I don't think you're stuck at all because.
It was an either-or. The first one is the one that Mr. DeAndrea is saying is untenable about the neighboring property, but the other option was to provide the town with written evidence that you have the authority to relocate.
Right, but he wants that before.
Right. Oh, yes. Yes, one of those scenarios, but you have two options.
I don't think you have to, you do not have to agree that his opinion is correct in this instance. Our attorney has indicated to the Sewer Department that there are no recorded easements, and therefore, we have no obligation to continue that line across. We do have an obligation under prescriptive rights to allow, to relocate it and to continue the service, and we've agreed to do that. And I can tell you that we are going to provide easements for those people where they do not now exist.
I understand that, but if the town attorney is suggesting that this is prudent for the town to get this information, then I think it does concern us.
We believe that the letter from the attorney indicates to satisfy that this condition at the last minute, of course, which is not unusual with the Sewer Department, and I put it on the record, it's not unusual. This information was provided to them on July 3rd after conversations, personal conversations with them in a meeting when we first discussed this. So, that's not, I don't think that's fair. I think that the commission in this case can understand that we will provide easements where none exists. We don't need, and if at the end of the day.
Do you have a problem with seeking any, have you talked to the neighbors about this?
I have no problem seeking that conversation. However, we should not be put in a position of potential extortion by a neighbor who has no rights to have the sewer there, other than by prescription.
Mr. DeAndrea, the problem is.
Prescription counts.
On the.
Let me explain that. Prescription means that the sewer is there, and it's going to remain there. We're not going to discontinue it, but we're going to now describe it with an easement, and that would be recorded and described, and then they will have the right to come on and repair and replace, which they do not currently have.
But you're going to relocate it.
Excuse me? We're definitely going to relocate it. We have to relocate it to make this project work. Yes, sir.
I mean, that's the only reason for doing this.
Right.
So, I was just going to suggest that if the commission, just for the sake of argument, approves this, you're still going to have a problem that you're going to have to satisfy either number one or one of the two options at some point.
Yes.
So, I think my suggestion would be that you extend this so that at least you have the ability to come back to the commission should you not get where you want to get with the Sewer Department. At least you still have the option of amending the plan through the commission instead of having to resubmit if it gets to that. Just trying to keep your options open for you.
And you're asking us to ignore what our council has said for really, if you could extend it, let's at least try to get it at the next, you think you can do something by the next meeting and just give us an extension till then?
Certainly can, Ms. Amman. We certainly can, but if that were going to be the case, it could have been communicated in several opportunities.
But we did try to say to you, I know when we talked to you, we said, well, we're really stuck with this.
And we went right at it.
And you said, no, and there was a big debate about whether Feminella was right or wrong, but we have been talking it all along. Now, that Rich didn't get to you till today, that's kind of, I'm sorry for that.
It's been longer than that, of course, because it's been going on for more than since.
But I know you just heard today, and I know we've been talking about it for several weeks, and I'm sorry for that.
I want the commission to understand, however, that to put the owner of this private property in a position of having to yield to unusual demands of an owner who have no rights is unfair.
Why don't you give us the extension? Seek what Mr. Feminella is asking for from the two owners, and if you can achieve it without harm to yourselves and so forth, if you have a problem, then you can come, at least you'll be on the agenda for the first.
Okay.
So.
Understood. And if anything can be done, timely comments from departments are extremely important. We try our hardest to.
We do too.
We don't disagree, but everybody is asking for their time, it seems.
I understand.
And some engineers in town ask for their time, some people on commission ask for their time.
If the Sewer Department had said, we're going to meet with the town attorney, then I think the owner's attorney should have been afforded the opportunity to participate in the discussion since he had already committed.
It didn't occur, so.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the point is well taken as a general commentary, and I will say that the First Selectman's Office through the Town Administrator is working with town departments to see how we can improve processes just townwide, and obviously, we'll be doing our part to try to speed things up to Mr. DeAndrea's point.
Okay. Sorry you had to get caught in the net. Sorry you had to get caught in the net.
Richard will buy you a beer.
Number nine, business management. So, we're leaving this one open. You got the extension?
Yes.
Okay.
He signed it in blood.
I know. I don't blame him. I mean, you know, it's 4:20 to this afternoon.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This is a property at 63 Church Street. You've actually seen this on many occasions over the years, probably going back maybe more than 10 at this point. The current owner of the property is seeking to take the rear building and take it from commercial use to a residential use. This is something you did consider and approve a little over three years ago. Unfortunately, not less than three years ago, but a little bit more than three years ago. We took this, or the prior council took this to the Z B A in May and was not successful in obtaining the variances that had been granted under the prior approval that you had given in May of.
Do you know why? Are you privy to the conversation?
Yes, yes. And in fact, that's the discussion that I want to have with you, knowing that this is not something that I'm going to stand here and say I want an affirmative vote on your behalf.
Well, you know we're up against.
I do know that.
You have good reporting.
And on the May 24th Z B A meeting, the board thought that there was too much bulk in the mansard roof design building. Currently, there is a gambrel-style barn-style roof, and the mansard was going to be much more bulky and imposing.
I thought you had, there appear to be calculations on the drawings that dispute that.
The, what had been submitted earlier, which the Board of Appeals denied, was actually 2,000 cubic feet larger. What we have proposed now.
So, this was not before the.
This was, no, this was after the denial.
Subsequent, okay.
Client came to me, and I said, I've read the transcript. I was actually at the hearing, heard what they had to say. They want you to reduce the bulk. The plans that we have in that are before you, reduce it so that it's 11,000 cubic feet less.
Correct.
Than the volume that's there now.
Right.
And I think this would have satisfied the zoning board of appeals, but we had to also, because of the change of design, go back to the Historic District Commission. And the members who were enamored with the mansard roof were, the ones who were not, were not at the meetings that had previously approved it. So, we went in with the mansard. There were a number of members that thought that although the mansard would work well for the rear building, that they wanted to maintain the gable roof in the front building. We were then faced with the Z B A meeting, which was an hour later, going to them with a plan that, although I thought it met the criteria and the concerns that they had in May, was going to change because the Historic District Commission didn't like the mansard roof design for the front building. They wanted to keep it as a gable. not at the meetings that had previously approved it. So we went in with the mansard. There were a number of members that thought that although the mansard would work well for the rear building, that they wanted to maintain the gable roof in the front building. We were then faced with the ZBA meeting, which was an hour later, going to them with a plan that although I thought it met the criteria and the concerns that they had in May, was going to change because the historic district commission didn't like the mansard roof design for the front building. They wanted to keep it as a gable. So we were not able to go forward with the zoning board of appeals, which of course was one of the conditions that you had.
Yes.
In terms of returning back here. I think, two things. One is, I think we can address the historic district commission's comments while not significantly increasing the volume that we have here on the plans that you've seen. I think those plans address the concerns that were expressed by the members of the ZBA who did not vote for the application. It was a split vote. Two members did vote in favor. Having said all that.
We can go forward.
We've run out of time on a statutory basis, and.
What do you want to do?
I, I understand how you have to vote, but.
Should you want to, I mean, are you going to withdraw?
No, I think I'll just leave it for the commission to vote based on the evidence that it has in front of it, knowing what that result will be.
Okay.
But if you do have any comments about what you do have in front of you, I would be very much interested in hearing them so that when we do come back to you, which we will, probably in, at one of the meetings in September, that we'll be able to address those as well.
I personally think, personally, that the design that you've arrived at for the building in the rear is more successful than what you had before. The building in the front, I don't know. It's always, it's always a thing about trying to make the, a project coherent. However, we haven't seen any designs that show the gable roof being retained on the front building, which you know the HDC is seeing. So I think if you, I mean, it's not unusual to see two different styles on a project, and I understand the reason you're wanting to go this way, but perhaps you should look at keeping the back and seeing if you can make the existing in the front work with it, which would perhaps cure all your problems.
And what does he do about the multiple residences in the R6? Is that going to?
One of the things that's.
I think, well, he may come, I was thinking he'd probably come back with a 141.
You know, one of the interesting things that happens, sometimes you change the regulations, and that will be helpful for a project, because previously, when, before you made the regulation change in June, this would need variances, but it was conforming. Now, with the changes you've made, this, as proposed, is non-conforming, and the question becomes, does the 5,000 square feet of commercial or the four units of residential, is that.
Less.
Less detrimental?
Less detrimental to the neighborhood.
If I can tip my hand a little as to where I'm going.
Yeah, well, we discussed it on Monday.
What section's that in?
If I have to tell you, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little worried.
Yep, and in fact, we discussed it on Monday, that that was the possibility.
I would think that's the way to go, if you, if you could get, in looking at just the numbers and everything, I, I don't see another way. I mean, you are reducing the bulk, which was, as you say, the concern. I didn't know that was the concern of ZBA, but you clearly have reduced the bulk in this design. It's less than the existing. And the other statistics that they ruled on in terms of side yards and so forth and so on, in one case, you make it better. The one side, you increase the non-conformity. Rear yard maintains the same. The front yard, you've increased the front yard, getting it closer to the old requirement of 25. And I think you reduced the FAR a bit?
It's basically the same, yeah.
Well, what I have in front of me is 0.815, and what I have proposed is 0811.
It's, it's very close.
As, well.
But, yes, it is more conforming.
And it's more conforming in lock coverage and building coverage.
And.
Wow, that's really like, you could lose that.
And with this design, we're able to bring in.
Yes.
The eve so that it actually is nine inches or 10 inches less than the existing condition.
Oh, the existing, okay. All right, anyway, so you want us to close this?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hegney, did you submit the authorization letter that your authorized agent for this applicant?
I thought I did, but I do have one, and I will submit it.
All right. Okay, any, do we have any public left? No? Just any conservation, any comments from the commission?
Thank you.
Nope. So we'll close it?
Yes.
Yeah, he doesn't want to.
And the last one, can't even believe I'm saying these words at 8:30.
Don't go there, okay? The next thing you know.
No, I already put the onus on.
I would have spoken more quickly if I realized that was the goal.
That was the goal, yes.
Yes.
Set a record. I think I'm going to be my children home for dinner.
This would be item 10, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. We were here back in the last month. We needed to get special exception for an indoor pool and a slight enlargement of a structure larger than 1,200 square feet, and also a variance for the height of that tennis structure. We obtained both of those from the zoning board of appeals last week. We have, the only other real outstanding issue was the conservation comments, and it's sort of like you can't see the forest for the trees, were 98.8%.
Really, Mr. Hegney?
Green space. I, I know. I was wondering about saying it, and I figured I'll say it anyway.
Late night humor, what are you going to do?
It's not late night yet. That's what's really sad.
In your mind, it's late night.
Oh, no.
Who's going to talk about when it drives you batty?
I did hear about that yesterday, and I am not going to go there.
Okay. Congrats.
You're just going to take care of the.
We, we did two changes. One was on the entry drive. We decreased the number of trees that are going to be removed from 62 to 42. We're adding well over 100 trees, just in this section of the property. And then we revised the grading in this area and highlighted it through Mr. McTig's plan to show how we were dealing with removing the road, which is some 15 or 20 feet in various places away from the wetlands, so that we could regrade this area right in here.
What is that road?
It's a, it's one of the roads, and there are a number of them that go through the site.
Right.
The wetland boundary is right here.
Right.
So we're looking at removing this road, grading down what is already a hillside.
Right.
Having it as a meadow, and then restoring along the wetland buffer. There were a couple of spots where the grading.
Before the Wetlands Agency, was that in your plan then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Wetland Agency has seen this. What I would suggest is that this be handled as a field condition with the Wetland Agency and your staff.
There was a comment in Alexandra's, did you get her memo?
I, I did. I did see that today.
Because she said something about the line had moved a bit, and since it moved towards the wetlands, that's something that.
I, you know, we're really talking about.
I know.
Almost inches at this point.
Should we just say an administrative review of?
Yes, that, that's, that's fine, rather than getting into it.
Excuse me, Jim McTig from Rosalia Engineering. I was on vacation last week, and I left instructions, and my draftsman just failed to move this line over with the silt fence. So it looks like the line, and so it looks like the line of development is further out, outside the trees. The whole intention is to protect the trees, put the silt fence in front of the trees, remove the driveway, and then we're going to retreat back to a further silt fence on the north side so that there's no disturbance to the tree roots during the rest of the construction process.
I think also her memo to us is the, is the employment of an arborist to be on the site full-time, or at least when any trees are being.
And we did submit a supplemental letter to staff today from the arborist indicating, we, you have enough stuff in your files, Mr. Chairman, so I didn't hand out 10 copies of it. I thought it was enough to provide it to staff.
In other words, so that's, as a.
That's acceptable to us.
If this were to be voted on this evening, that's an acceptable condition.
There will be arborists and landscape architects on this site planting literally hundreds of significant trees.
Right.
107 is what's in the.
No, no, that's just, that's just in the driveway section.
The driveway, okay.
It's, it's really more like 300.
235 just in this section, plus the 107.
Yeah.
So it's 342 trees.
Can you cut down?
That was a trick question. We would ask for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the other commission?
And you'll protect any endangered species to the extent reasonable?
I don't know that that's.
Actually, you know, that, that came up as part of the wetland approval, and we worked with wetlands to make sure that the trees that were being removed as part of the plan were done outside of the season.
Habitat's.
For the little flying creatures.
Check endangered species.
Yes, and, and we did that, and we worked with the wetland staff. That, that tree removal has already occurred. We've accomplished that.
Okay. And then the only last thing, I know it's in your narrative to us, but you're going to, you're going to submit, if this gets approved, you're going to submit a lock consolidation map?
Yes. Yes, we do. It's, it's ready to go, and.
I'm sure. Just waiting for us.
Soon as we can.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll close.
Thank you.
Adios.
Hey, every now and then, we're going to surprise you.
Surprise ourselves.
And ourselves.
Please don't trample each other on the way out.
All right. We have.
Three?
Three.
We have three closed, and I think can be voted on this evening if you all want to.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Start with number three. ITL Investments LLC, which is on East Elm, 59 East Elm. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I'm coming. I just have to have it in front, everything in front. Okay. I hereby move approval of the final site plan and special permit for a new two-family residence and associated improvements at 59 East Elm Street. In so doing, the commission finds that the two-family use is appropriate to the neighborhood, and asks that, and notes that the applicant has revised the original plan to flip the layout. I don't know how else to say.
It'll be, yeah, that's good enough.
That's good enough. They can word it better. That the applicant has prepared an updated landscaping plan, which shall be reviewed as necessary by staff, and shall continue to preserve the significant trees as originally, and that will also include native species. The applicant shall secure any other staff reviews required by the change in the site plan, and the applicant shall submit to the ZEO the grade plane information on this application as well as, and I believe this has already been done, show all pertinent rights of way on.
Well, his question was the street right of way, so.
And the street right of way, and that's all I got.
Well, I think one of the other things is the revised layout preserves the street parking as it currently, currently exists, and it does not have to be modified and changed, which I think is a positive. One, the other thing is that IWWA is okay on this, and DPW is okay on this.
Well, I, I think, given the fact that they changed it, okay, yeah, but, yeah, let's just say they're all right. Okay.
They're certainly okay to go for zoning permit.
Yep. Okey-dokey.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Number four was left open.
Number.
Number nine, is that number nine?
Um, okay, so I hereby move approval of this site plan and special permit to convert an existing structure to four residential units in addition to the existing residential unit, subject to all requisite and outstanding staff comments and reviews.
Yes, she did, and there's a reason for it. There is an outstanding item on this matter, and that is the fact that the zoning board of appeals has not heard this matter and has not in fact opined on it, and therefore I think the move, the, that we need to consider that in your motion to approve this.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second to that?
Well, wait, how are you considering it then?
She said a motion to approve.
Right.
And I said that I just made a statement in the discussion that we have before us.
She, he's discussing, and it's not in the resolution.
It's not.
Right, okay.
I'm just.
It's a discussion point.
I'm just letting my fellow commissioners know, which they already do, that this is, we're proceeding on this, the motion's being made without approval from zoning board of appeals.
So is that portion of it included in your approval then for that space?
In the resolution, no.
Or are you excluding that portion of it from your motion?
Well, it depends how the motion goes. Depending if it's approved or not approved, then I guess, however you write the staff report, you can do with that statement as you see fit.
Okay, then, we'll move to deny this section.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
I hereby move.
Okay, hearing none, the motion is denied because there was no second to it. Okay.
Okay, or shall we move denial and then give the reasons?
Yes.
Okay. So I hereby move that we deny this site plan and special permit to convert the existing building to blah, blah, blah. Make the whole thing to four, to convert an existing building to four residential units in addition to the unit already, already in existence.
Well, no, that's not true. What's in existence, though, on this site, the existing approval, is a single-family unit and office space.
Right, okay, so I just said, there's one, there's one unit in existence, and they're adding four residential, and you say you just want to add, and that there's also office space?
Yes.
Okay. In making this motion, the commission to deny, the commission notes that the applicant has not received an approval from ZBA for the requisite variances or a positive review from the HDC.
I think that's probably.
Do you want to talk about, and there, it doesn't comply with his result?
Does not comply with regulations.
Well, no, it does not comply with regulations.
And it does not comply with regulations and has not, yep. I think that's a good way to do it. Okay?
All right, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. You know, that was hard, us having to do that, you know? That was very challenging.
I mean.
Yeah. Very challenging. Okay.
Number 10, Lars Nielsen, trustee.
Hold on, I just lost my notes. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm opening them up. Okay. I wouldn't be able to, I hereby move approval of the site plan and special permit for, to construct a new main residence and associated structures and improvements. In so doing, the commission notes that the zoning board of appeals on July 12th issued both a special exception and variances, that the applicant has revised the plan to show only 42 versus an original 62 of the entry drive trees to be removed, that the applicant will be planting approximately 342 trees in total, that the southeast slope to the dwelling will be maintained as meadow, that the applicant has provided a revised sedimentation and erosion control plan, that the conservation. sedimentation and erosion control plan, that the conservation department has asked for an arborist to be involved in the tree protection for the site, and has also requested, as agreed with wetlands, that endangered species on site be protected. The applicant should review with IWW, obtain a staff review from IWW of any, of the result of any changes in the plan, and the applicant shall submit a lot consolidation map.
I would add to that, that the Department of Public Works, under a teardown exemption, has noted that the property doesn't need any further review. Is that correct? No further review because of the teardown exemption, right, on train each, okay.
Does it need review from DPW at least?
Right, right, and the health department is, has approved an eight-bedroom septic system. Anything else?
Second.
Oh, second, I was going to see if anybody has any other comments to add to it or not.
They're all like looking to see if we can get out of here by 9:00.
Oh, we're, piece of, piece of cake, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
We did it.